Good evening, welcome to the Red Hug Town Board Meeting of August 9th, 2021. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
It's August 10th.
August 10th, thank you very much. I see the date is wrong on the agenda. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. I hope you are all doing well at home. The situation obviously is quite fluid with COVID and the new variant. The last statistic I saw had 500 active cases in Dutchess County, double what it was just in a couple-
Five sixty today.
Five sixty today, so that's yet another increase of 12% just in one day. We are open here in Town Hall. We encourage appointments if possible, so you're not waiting with others in the hallway. And as we've stated before, there is a masking requirement to increase the odds of keeping you and our employees safe here at the business. So for tonight, for the folks at home, here are some of the items that we'll be discussing. We have our reports, as we always do for the first meeting of the month. We are going to authorize going out to bid for highway materials at the request of our Highway Superintendent, as well approving a shared service agreement with the town of Clinton, should they wish to join with us and share some of the trucks and other highway equipment. There was a bid for well have rehab project for the Water District. We're gonna have some discussion and hopefully a resolution to approve that work. The tradition, it says tradition, but actually it's tradition, singular. And that project is now on Phase Four and Five, and so we have some administrative items that we need to address and to discuss some of the features of those phases. The fifth item is the environmental review for the Winnicke Trail Project. As the folks know, we have been working alongside the Winnicke Land Trust, and we hope to develop out that Village to Village Trail. This would be the Sawkill Link portion of that. And we now want to do the environmental review for the trail itself. The trail is gonna be a non-motorized pedestrian and biking trail. And so that's on the agenda tonight. We're gonna have some discussion on two timely topics. One that's been on the radar of a couple committees here in town, that's short-term rentals, which we often refer to as Airbnbs or VRBOs. And then we're going to have some discussion about the recent marijuana legislation that was approved up in Albany, and how we might proceed through the course of making some decisions regarding that. And then we have correspondence and public comments. So with that being said, why don't we jump right in? We have the Supervisors' Report, as we always do the first meeting of the month. I'll give you the totals. Started out the month with an opening balance of $7,853,000, receipts of just over $1 million, dispersments of $682,751, and a balance of $8,251,000. And that is for the period ending July 31st, 2021. We also have some budget adjustments, and we have your variance reports as well. And in connection with that, we also had some requests for approvals, purchasing approvals, from our Highway Superintendent. She would like authorization to go ahead and purchase above that skid steer. So I'd like to go ahead and make that motion with a caveat that we'd like to check in with her and see if there's an all-electric version of it that would satisfy the requirements of the department. As you know, we need to start transitioning not only any fleet vehicles, but any heavy-duty vehicles. And the question then becomes, how soon is the technology ready for that? And will it satisfy their needs? So that would be a determination for our Highway Superintendent. But I'd like to make that motion to include that when you approve the Supervisors' Report and the budget adjustments. There's also a request for some additional funding for signs for Metzger Road, Old Farm, and other traffic control issues. And I don't know, Bill Hamel, did you want to speak to that request?
To put signage?
Yeah, signage, well, the signage, and then there's the Williams Road issue, and then delineators.
The Williams Road issue is the only issue that I have some objections to.
Okay.
Everything else seems appropriate. Williams Road issue is an issue that frankly is a, something that a Highway Department needs to do.
Okay.
And if they're concerned about safety or other issues, we can have local arrangements, have local police accompany them. But I don't, I don't understand the need for that.
Okay. So it seems like there's a total request here of 1,700, an estimate of 1,988, but an existing 860. So 1,128 would be needed to add on to in order to satisfy the 1,988. But you're saying, Bill-
It's 500.
That 500 that she's asking we sub-contract? I mean, I agree with you. You just have the police with them. It should take hours worth of work, I think. You can have a few markings on the road. And I think that would be more prudent, the use of taxpayer dollars for that. Any, anybody else have any other thoughts?
I agree with that.
Okay, so if we were to take 500 over both of the 1,128, 628, so yeah, I would also ask you then to approve another $628, which would get that budget line up to accomplish the other three things that she would like to have done relative to signage. And then the last thing is- The last thing is the request, she did a memo request for increasing hours on the clerk's office, clerk's position. And again, I don't have the Highway Super budget request. It is a little early this year, so it needed more time, understandably. But I'm willing to up the hours to 12 hours per week. I know that in her request from last year, she spoke about how 12 hours would be manageable for the department. And then we can look at the other staffing requests that we've had, which is recreation and in Justice Court. And we're just not in a position to address those. I think at the, at the budget time, which is in the next, well, not weeks, frankly, we'll be back into budget session. We can take a look at those. So I would like to ask for your approval of all of those things. The Supervisors' Report, the budget requests from the Highway Department, and the budget adjustments from our bookkeeper, Ann Conway.
Mr. Supervisor, I noticed that Teresa's request includes a recommendation that you dispose of the 2003 Bobcat.
Yeah.
The board would need to make a decision of that surplus equipment, so you may want to include that in your decision-making to determine its surplus.
Yes.
Determine that it can be sold at auction, or you can recommend that it be-
You can't.
No, no, I mean like return or trade-in.
Yeah, I think the trade-in seems like a reasonable amount, so if you're all-
Make a finding as to surplus.
Yeah, I think that that, that's wise.
So I still move?
All right, thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Four ayes. Thank you very much, okay. We also have the Town Clerk's Report tonight.
Mr. Supervisor, could you just repeat the vote?
It was four ayes. It was a motion by this bill, a second by that bill. And I apologize if you're watching at home. I was getting not focused on the screen there, because it'll get dizzy. A lot of documents there. Okay, the Town Clerk's Report. Deanna, would you kindly? Put it there somewhere.
The Town Clerk's Report for the period of July 1st, 2021 to July 31st, 2021. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $5,079.80, of which $4,112 was money collected for garbage at the recycling center. Amount paid to New York State Ag and Markets for spay and neuter program was $44. The amount paid to the New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses was $202.50. The amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses was $153.70. The total state, county, and local revenues, $5,480.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the Town Clerk's Report?
So move?
Second.
Very good, all in favor? Okay, thanks very much. Announcements, just have one announcement. And that is community action. Oh, this is right on the same. Okay, there's a food distribution, right? Does somebody speak Spanish? Help me here. We have the Spanish version up on the screen. Food distribution, free, and that would be on Wednesday the 16th. No, is that right, in the morning? Afternoon?
It's the 18th of August. The other one's from June to July.
Wednesday, August 18th.
Jacob, would you read it off, please?
Yeah, so it's Wednesday the 18th of August from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then again, Wednesday the 22nd of September from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. I don't know if there's a location listed up. It can be on East Market Street, 44 East Market Street, and that's it.
There you go. Very good, thank you very much. I don't know how I grabbed the Spanish one, but I did, and thank you for bailing me out there. Okay, any other announcements? Does anybody have any announcements? You want to make up? Okay, very good. At this time, public comment, is there a public comment? Linda, if you would be kind enough to go to the microphone, just let us know.
The whole thing? Where it should be? Okay, I have, is it on? I have.
Huh?
Okay, I have four items to mention. One, St. Margot's Home Committee has not been reconstituted.
Correct.
That needs to be done. The last meeting was 2015. People died from that group, and it kind of fell apart. I want to commend the Rec Park Group under John Kuhn and Doug Stronsky for keeping the facilities outside, everything in good shape, taking down trees, making sure it's safe for the public. Number two, I asked her in the past to have an ADA at Budsman, so that if somebody needs specific help with a disability, that they know who to go to and that they will be treated properly. Three, I'd like to have the status of the electric vans. I think that should be done each month so that everybody knows that, how they're doing. And four, we've not mentioned this, but we had two former individuals pass recently. Supervisor Jack Gillefeather, July 12th, he was 89, just two weeks short of being 90. And Highway Superintendent George Hildebrand, 94 on July 24th. And my last thing I want to mention is, we don't need these masks. This is a hoax. It's a plandemic. There is no COVID. It's influence A and B. The COVID has not been isolated. People need to do research, and our town representatives need to do the research too. Let's get rid of these masks.
Thank you, Linda. Thanks for your opinion. We are not scientists, but we do take the advice of them. Okay, moving right along. Number one on the agenda is a resolution to go out to public bid for highway materials. A while back, our Highway Superintendent provided us with the bid specifications, working alongside, I presume, our engineer and certainly our attorney to the town. This is standard fare each year, and I wonder if you had any questions before we go ahead and entertain Resolution Number-
Forty-three.
Forty-three, thank you very much, Deanna. Any questions, folks, on this? For the folks at home, we engage in public bidding for all of the, we'll call it expensive items, you know, the items that meet a certain threshold. And that's in order to provide you with the best pricing. That's the taxpayer who puts the bill for the work that needs to be done. Okay, seeing no more discussion on this, Resolution Number 43, Isumo is authorizing the bidding for highway materials. My resolution is located, there it is. Resolution authorizing the Town Clerk to advertise a request for sealed bids for the purchase of ice control, bracing, sealed bids for hot-mix asphalt, and a request for proposals for various materials and services for Jump D22. And I think, Bill, did you, did you move that? Baloney, would you move that?
I thought you already moved it.
Second? That's what happens when you're searching for your resolution.
Jacob.
How long did that take for me to forget that I moved it? Yeah?
Thank you, best of the years on, I was before the hit.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, without further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Another request we have, and we don't know if we're gonna need it, but you know, a while back in preparation, we developed, working with our attorney to the town, intermunicipal agreements, various shared services, and in this particular one, it's with the town of Clinton, as I think I mentioned earlier, highway equipment trucks, so on and so forth. And at the request of our Highway Superintendent, she would like to advance this. Again, our attempt to do so requires the town of Clinton to join in. It takes two to tango, as they say. But here's the, here's the document. It's been provided to the town of Clinton, and hopefully they'll take us up on our offer. If there's a time where they feel they would like to share our equipment, do it. Otherwise, it's put it up on the screen there. This would be Resolution Number 44, by the way. And if you are watching at home, you're gonna get dizzy, so I recommend you close your eyes so we get somewhere near the page. Okay, that was the number eight, one of the three things. One, seven, okay. For the folks at home, there's 272 pages in front of us. Here we go. It's a very simple resolution and a simple intermunicipal agreement. Basically, we bill each other when we need each other's equipment. It helps save on the need to each buy individual pieces of equipment. Oftentimes, or the subcontract outwork. We already have an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Clinton, two other municipalities, or did anyway, for the mini excavator, so we each did it for a few months. Okay, that's the resolution. Here's the agreement. Any questions? If not, let's move it. It's Resolution Number 44, an Isumo. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four ayes. Third item on the agenda is well rehabilitation work and assorted other maintenance for the Water District. We heard from our chairman, Hank Paris, he would like the board to move on this this evening, go out to bid. The engineers have reviewed the bids, and this is our Resolution Number 45. Did you have any questions about the documents they are recommending that we award to Weston and Sampson? Doing business as supposed to be church, and $69,780 for the project, and that's been determined to be the lowest responsible bidder. Okay, I'm hearing no questions. And Isumo, Resolution 45, is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. We're now on Resolution Number 46, or Agenda Item Number Four. It's Tradition, that's the development, a little past the movie theater there, on Old Farm Road. And they are now requesting approvals to move into Phase Four and Five. The Planning Board approved this project, I believe, back in 2015, if I'm not mistaken. And they approved the development in phases. And they are now at the point where they would like to build and sell some homes in Phases Four and Five. And what is unique about these phases is it comes with some additional amenities, if you will, for the community. So one of the requirements for the Planning Board was that they build a sidewalk that would take it from Route Nine over to the development. So that will increase the pedestrian nature and the safety of that area of town. And as you know, we now have sidewalks going almost the entire length on both sides of Route Nine. And that is, that cost is to be borne by the developer. I think it's somewhere in the $60,000. What we do have to do, what our agreement was, and according to the Planning Board's approvals, was to move the drainage there in order to accommodate that development. And so that's about a $30,000 price tag, you know, like it or take. So what we are doing now is approving the bond figures, and also the incentive zoning fees. And the thing about that development, part of the approvals for that development was that in order to get greater density in the same footprint, that was one of the options allowed. And so they chose to have greater density, and so they need to contribute incentive zoning funds for each and every unit above what they were originally entitled to. So the maximum build out is 102 units in that traditional neighborhood district design. And so for Phases Four and Five, we noticed they came in at the end of last month with their payments, right before it was to be adjusted. And they are required to make payment of $75,258 and $61,574 for the two phases, Four and Five. So that makes a total of approximately $137,000 of the take. And so that's part of the approvals in front of us tonight. Our engineers have looked over, we have cost estimates for the performance bonds, and they need to put up money to ensure that they complete the work that they agreed to associated with the development. Chris Shaw, is there anything you wanted to add that I've forgotten?
Well, I'll just note that in this particular set of two sections, there are three public improvements that are being constructed as a part of this set of improvements that includes remaining portion of Beeman Road and Skylight Drive, and an access easement to lighting, which sort of goes over top of that, and then a stormwater easement. These are put in place as an offer of session right now, so that there's a form of that, that the board is approving. The board won't actually take title until it later decides to do so in its discretion. After the improvements have been completed, we have a bond to secure the completion of the improvements, so that those who are purchasing property are aware that those improvements should be completed. And then we have, as Robert indicated, the performance bonds. He announced that the engineer has reviewed and approved, our engineer, time bond. And we have the other standard conditions, including, as he said, the incentive zoning fee and escrow for inspection fees by our engineer as the construction proceeds.
Okay. Any questions before we go ahead and entertain, is this 46, Deanna?
Forty-six.
Is that right?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Okay, if not, Isumo. Is there a second? Bill Hamel's our second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you all very much. We are next onto environmental review work related to the Winnicke Trail. As I mentioned earlier, we're working with Winnicke Land Trust to complete the Sawkill Link of the Village to the Village Trail. A pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, non-motorized trip. And so we need to now do the environmental review related to that. And what do we have to show on the screen?
Is there a trail map?
Do we have a map? The map come through?
It's not in this.
I haven't seen one, no.
Well, we may not have a map.
There should be, it should be further back. It's the last four pictures. 187.
187?
Yeah. Can't miss it. There.
That's something we can't wait for. There we go. Okay.
Part of the buyer's accursed, I mean, that's not actually the-
Yeah, that's not the trail map, that's a horse line, no. But just for the folks at home, just so you know, these are the properties. These are the properties that we are talking about. The trail will come through, if you can see my cursor here. The trail will come through First Street. I think that's a recent change by Winnicke. And then make its way up towards the bar-owned properties there on 9G, and then a crossing there at Bar. But what's, what's in question now is not 9G or the other side, but just the trail that goes through there.
That was the color code, right.
The color code, yeah.
I could see that, I'd like to put it down.
Yeah, would you-
They have it in our email.
They have it in their email. Would you, Chris, could you show it to the cameras so the folks at home can see it? Thanks.
Can you tell me where to put it?
Are you?
Is that good?
Just make the other context.
Okay, so I'm gonna scroll back up there. Don't look yet. Get dizzy at home. Okay, so the first thing that we have to tackle related to Seber is-
Cleave Agency.
Exactly. Designating the town as lead agency, which the town board as lead agency. And there we go. Sorry for the delay with that. So the town board of town of Red Hook is considering a proposal for the construction of the Saw Hill Trail project as a cooperative project pursuant to a proposed cooperative agreement and two easements entitled, indeed, a conservation easement and public access easement given by Winnekee Land Trust. And the town purchased a public access easement from the land trust for these purposes previously. We have determined, after examining the environmental review documents, that there are other involved and federal agencies on this matter, which include the planning board and the ZBA. But we find it to be an unlisted action, and we declare ourselves as lead agency. And so this resolution authorizes the town supervisor to circulate this coordination request letter to the other involved agencies. Any questions about declaring lead agency on this? If you're the ones who've been working on this project for years with Winnekee? Okay. If not, why don't we go ahead and entertain that? We'll call that resolution forty-seven?
Yes.
Declaring ourselves to be lead agency and the project to be unlisted and isimove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, and there are the forms, the RFAF that you, who were viewed, which is just a short assessment form, which for the folks at home, we go through the proposed action and we review it against, you know, any potential impacts, and then we note any significant impacts, and we did not find.
And we'll make those findings later.
Yeah, we'll make those findings. We did not find that we needed a long form to do the environmental review. Included in your documents, by the way, is a biodiversity report that was done for Winnekee a little while back from Hudsonia. Talk about all the things that are on the property, the property as a whole. Property as a whole encompasses three hundred and thirty-six acres. The trail as it's currently proposed would not go through all of that, but would make it efficient to get through from a village to village trail perspective. What we need to do is now establish a date for a public hearing regarding the trail project. And I would propose that we shoot perhaps for the first meeting at September. Diana, that would be what date for the second Tuesday of September? Is that right?
The fourteenth.
September fourteenth. Seven thirty-five, does that work? It's resolution number forty-eight establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the proposed Saw Hill Trail project. And isimove, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Thank you all very much. We're moving right along. We may have a couple of agenda items here that might take a little longer. Bill O'Neill.
Yes.
I wonder if you could give us the two-minute version of recommendations from the task force on short-term rentals, both in terms of the three classifications that you're recommending? And then just sort of an overall view of what the recommendation is as far as the various zoning districts? And maybe cover just a little bit of some of the, you know, supporters, what they say are some of the benefits and some of the folks worried about it, you know, what their concerns are.
In ten minutes, you said?
Oh, I was gonna give you two, but you're gonna take ten. Why don't you take one?
Everybody should know that when we talk about short-term rentals in the town of Red Hook, it's subject of next discussion. A short-term rental is defined as a structure where overnight accommodation is provided for transient occupants for compensation for fewer than thirty days or nights. They are currently not allowed in the town of Red Hook, so the proposed zoning amendments are to allow for the first time STRs in the town of Red Hook. The three current zoning laws that apply to what we call STRs are the bed and breakfast law, which has been on the books for many years, the lodging law, and the home occupation law. But the intermunicipal task force, having examined the subject since two thousand and eighteen, is submitting a proposed amendment in three parts to the town board to allow STRs in the town of Red Hook. They contain three documents, the residential accessory use table, which is two pages, an STR annual operating permit, and a one-time exception registration. The task force admits that these proposals are all consistent with the comprehensive plan, which for years in the town of Red Hook is recommended maintaining the rural character of the town of Red Hook and retaining residential character of the suburban neighborhoods. The task force proposes allowing for relaxation of regulations at a later date, but initially restricting the use of STRs in the town of Red Hook. So by these proposed amendments, STRs would be allowed in the town of Red Hook as an accessory used to a single-family dwelling, which must be the primary residence of the property owner. That's the key sentence in our proposed legislation. STRs require an annual operating permit through our town building department, and they would be classified as one of two types, hosted when a property owner is present overnight with their guests, and unhosted where a property owner is absent during the rental period. The proposal says that there would be three hosted STRs classified in three classes and allowed in our specific zoning districts. Class one is one to two bedrooms located within a single-family dwelling offered for rent, would be allowed as a permitted use in all zoning districts except the one and one and a half RD district, the WC, the TND, R and OI. A class two would be three to four bedrooms located within a single-family dwelling offered for rent, and they would be allowed by special permit in all zoning districts, except again the RD one and the RD one and a half, the WC, the LI, and the TND, R and I. And the third class, class three, would be one to two bedrooms located in an existing accessory building on a single-family lot offered for rent. And they would be allowed as a permitted use in all zoning districts, again, except the RD one and one and a half, WC, V one, LI, the TND, R and OI. Unhosted STRs would only be allowed as a permitted use in the AVD, the agricultural business district. However, the task force recommends to the town board that an annual one-time exception be allowed in all zoning districts, again, except the one and one and a half RD districts. A limited exception would be available to owners of a single-family dwelling who occupy the dwelling as their primary residence, who may rent the dwelling unhosted one time per calendar year for less than thirty days, subject to registration with the town building department. So this recommendation by the intermunicipal task force seems, in the opinion of the task force, to address the issue that in communities in the Hudson Valley throughout the country, STRs have to be addressed because they are a very popular and a very expanding economic development in most rural communities. Different rural communities, you know, have had reactions in different ways to STRs. So the town of Red Hook proposes, the municipal task force proposes, that we take a conservative view of STRs, but not dismiss STRs as not being available to anybody in the community who wants to utilize the economic benefit of them. So the recommendations seem to be, what we would propose, is a modern way. It's allowed in mostly all zoning districts except the most intense residential districts, one and one and a half acres in the town of Red Hook. The opinion of the task force was that in residential districts, like in the comprehensive plan, there is an emphasis on maintaining the rural character, the residential nature of our community. And we have had recommendations by many people that that is an essential requirement that they would make of the town board, is to maintain that character and not allow the commercialization of our most intimate residential neighborhoods. And so we feel that that addresses that. At the same time, in the business district and the agricultural business district, which as we all know in our Centers and Green Space Plan years ago, was created to allow for economic development in the town of Red Hook through agricultural purposes. And this would allow hosted and unhosted STRs in the ag business district, almost without exception. And that would be because those are areas where you have lots of space and where, as people would complain, you do not have the traffic, the noise, the, you know, the unresidential nature of a commercial rental property. So the exception has been proposed because in our town, we feel there's a unique situation, perhaps generated from the BART College community, where individuals may leave their home for two or three weeks or a month. And at that time, they might want to, you know, rent the property out as an unhosted STR. And that that might be available, and the town board should consider allowing a one-time exception to allowing an unhosted STR just one time, again, subject to registration with the town building department. Many people have advised the task force that there's a need for economic development in the town of Red Hook, that there's a need to allow people to use their property however they want. And the task force recognizes that and in many ways allows for STRs in many zoning districts under certain circumstances. But at the same time, the task force feels an obligation under the comprehensive plan to maintain what, again, we refer to as the rural character of the town of Red Hook. So as an initial step, if the town board considers placing this on a, for public hearing, they would receive more feedback from the community. We've already heard a lot from the Economic Development Committee, which in a particular sense, the presentation to the town board is in two parts. One part is from the intermunicipal task force. The other part is from the Economic Development Committee, which has proposed to the town board basically to allow STRs everywhere in the town of Red Hook without any regulation except through the planning, through the building department. And of course, everybody agrees there should be health considerations, traffic considerations, parking considerations, et cetera. But basically, the EDC, the Economic Development Committee in town of Red Hook, has proposed that STRs be allowed everywhere, unhosted. And so there seems to be then your two focuses that have been presented to the town board. These, the submission by the intermunicipal task force, which was in a memo dated April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one, we submit, was well thought out, it's totally consistent with everything we've talked about, and it speaks for itself, and it should be available to be presented to the public. And the specific language of the proposed amendments is attached to it and has already been approved by the planner for the town of Red Hook as far as being consistent with other laws that are currently available in the town of Red Hook.
And we have had those documents up on our town website for a while now, and we invited people to take a look at it and to submit comments. We did get some written comments which are part of the record. I won't go into all of those, we'll reach them at correspondence, but we do have, I think, three, you know, advocating for short-term rentals, I think, three people operating or managing short-term rentals, and then one resident who has concerns about having a short-term rental or short-term rentals in their neighborhood. And so this is one of those issues where you find, and we're gonna get to a few of them tonight, and certainly throughout our terms here in serving you as the public, where the body of our constituents have very diverse opinions on how to address these issues. And what we try to do is we try to work towards a consensus, and we can always change and modify things if we feel that our consensus opinion and our vote doesn't fully reflect what we were hoping for and what you were hoping for. So we'd like to have continued input on this topic. Tonight, I thought maybe we could have some discussion about some of the particulars because we as a board haven't really had a chance to bounce it around a little bit. And so I wondered how best we could do this. Maybe we could take a look at the three different classes? And I think we have, we have this up on the screen, if you'd like to pan over there. Sure, folks at home, I hope that's big enough. And as Bill said, there's several ways to host somebody. And he accurately articulated, we don't allow lodging currently, except for in the AVD and in other business districts. In fact, we took some steps several years ago to limit lodging or remove lodging from residential districts because we didn't want hotels being constructed and in conflict, land use conflict. That's a lot of the work that we do, the planning board does, is to try to prevent problems in the first place. We have been fortunate that we haven't had many complaints about short-term rentals in our community so far. But of course, that doesn't guarantee that there won't be complaints. You look at one of our local treasures, Opus Forty, over on the other side of the river there, apparently there's a regularly operating Airbnb right next to it, or short-term rental, I should say. And I guess things had gotten so bad, people were trespassing on that treasure of a place, and they had to construct a fence, or felt they had to construct a fence there around their property. And so I guess for the folks at home, you know, consider before you give us your input, you may be somebody who wants to rent out a room, or wants to rent out your place. Or you may be somebody who wakes up one day and has a short-term rental next to you. And so we'd really appreciate it if you give it some thought and give us some feedback about, you know, that sort of risk reward ratio and what you think about that. We are very fortunate, I've said this now for, I think, two years that you all have been tackling this, three years maybe? Could be three years now. That we have very distinct zoning districts, that's not always true in many municipalities. I know in our neighbor in Myland, there's a lot of similarities in portions of their town and in other places. In Red Hook, however, we have many different zoning districts and we have neighborhoods. And so that's really something that I think it helped guide us in trying to make a relatively intelligent decision on how to move forward. So I wondered, can we maybe start with some discussion about the different classes? And I don't really have any question about how you came up with class one, one or two bedrooms located within a single dwelling. I would like to get some thought about renting a room out on a short-term basis and what you think about that as far as what the negative potential impacts could be of allowing that in some of the denser locations. And I should add, that was the one complaint we did have, actually, was in one of those type neighborhoods, that the neighbor was renting out a room, and that person had to experience people trespassing trying to get to the side interest of that Airbnb room.
We were trying to get into their house, mistaken, I don't know the line.
Oh, has that happened to him?
But I think that was a one or one and a half acre zoning.
Okay, okay. So that would be the type of risk. But that would be a posted situation. So in theory, provided they got there, okay, there would be some supervision. But again, I'm thinking in terms of enforcement of all this, so how would we be able to enforce those types of situations? those types of situations? We would, we would check on, on the platforms themselves and hire somebody like Host Compliance in order to do it.
Well, one, one thing that's in the New York State, municipalities have been told that once they pass a law that has to do with STRs, so that you address the issue, then you will qualify for, you know, association with the county level.
Okay.
And the county then through Host Compliance will provide your municipality with data and information about who's running STRs and who's paying the taxes and that sort of thing. Because all STRs, of course, would have to pay some tax to the county, not to the town. And so the other thing to mention is that the STR legislation proposed to the town board does not apply to the villages of Red Hook or Tibrolle, so they're different. And also, it doesn't apply to a situation where if you exchange residences, you know, you give your house up to friends and friends give up their house to you. There has to be a commercial money-changing hands transaction before you submit to an STR.
I, I hear somebody creating a house swapping app right now, don't you Jacob?
Yeah.
And it's a platform that I'm sure it's already been created. Can you explain to me, and I'm sorry if I'm talking too much to you, do the gentleman chime in here? So class two, three to four bedrooms located within a single dwelling offered for rent. So that would not be a whole house rental, is that what we're saying?
Well, it's the same as the bed and breakfast law occurring. You can rent up to four bedrooms in your home as a hosted person, you know, in what we call a bed and breakfast. They've done away with breakfast, of course, throughout the state. But the, the three classes are based upon one and two bedrooms in your home, just, just by permitted use. You don't have to go and get any special permit. But once you start to go to three or four bedrooms, then you have to get a special permit, as it says there, but you're still allowed in the same zoning district. And the class three is strictly an accessory building, where you have a building on your property which is not your primary residence, but it's on your lot. And there you have accommodated that to be a rental. And you can do that also as an STR, but again, by special permit.
And just for the, for clarity for the public, the special permit in class two, the thinking behind that was that the planning board who issues special permits for a variety of purposes would want to make sure that there's adequate parking and other issues. When you're renting three or four bedrooms, you're increasing the volume of people, and they could be three or four different people, so you know, making sure that there's adequate parking, sewage, and other issues that would make sure that it would accommodate that. So you're having a second set of eyes, take a look at the property, ensure that it's, it's adequate.
So the accessory building in class three, so that would be...
That's like a...
In, in existing, or could somebody build an accessory building for that purpose?
No, no new construction is allowed. So it's an existing, you know, an apartment over your garage, a mother and daughter, or in-law apartment, if it exists, then you can rent it out as an STR, the same as a class two.
But it would have to meet the Department of Health requirements in the same way the planning board approves accessory structures. They have to make sure there's a county board of health, adequate sewage, parking, and all of those issues. So the accessory structure is making, the town's making sure, whether it's for a short-term or a long-term rental, it doesn't really matter, they want to make sure that those issues are covered.
So I guess Robert's question was whether this is prohibiting, once it would be created, like accessory law, it's supposed to be created post the adoption of the law, like this as is, whether those new ones would be permitted to have a class three STR? I think that was what you were asking.
Yeah, could a, could a landowner then build an accessory building for their relative? And then I think actually when...
The word, the word existing, accessory building is in class three.
No, I understand.
So you can't be converting it.
No, no, no.
Well, we're asking what existing means, whether, whether it exists at the time of the adoption of the law.
Adoption, or it exists, so for example, I'm not prohibited if, if a parent needs to come live with me, for example, and I need to build a small dwelling unit for that, and then God forbid that parent passes on, then I've got that dwelling. Is that an existing or are you saying at the time of adoption?
I, I think our proposal was it would be at the time of adoption, existing at the time of adoption. But again, that's what the lawyer and the planner will have to spell out.
Yeah.
As far as being consistent with, with other aspects of our zoning law.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing...
But it's a tech, it's a bit of a technical...
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to get some insight into it.
But people have to understand also that the zoning law as it exists currently in town, you can't have more than three accessory buildings in your property. So there are other checks and balances, if you will. So say somebody has, you know, two garages and a shed, they wouldn't be able to, even if they came before the planning board, the town to try to, unless they got to the zoning board appeals, an exception, they wouldn't be able to build something for their ailing parent.
Yeah. It seems like the word existing is kind of useless here. It doesn't seem like it's actually accomplishing anything where, unless we're trying to prohibit future ones from being used in that way, which feels like the people who've already done it are fortunate to have gotten in and have that, you know, appropriate use, whereas somebody like Robert was saying, where somebody built one for, you know, a mother-in-law unit, and then, you know, it becomes available, they're unable to have this use just because of the, the timing of that. And that doesn't really seem fair. You have to use the space, like I don't understand why you'd be ruled out, permitted. It's something that's otherwise permitted to be developed under the planning board, and you have the appropriate facilities that you require under the law.
Well, my recollection of the meetings with the task force was there was a concern that people might gain that and say, oh, I'm building this for my ailing parent, and not really be building it for, they're doing it for a, for a commercial purpose. You know, I had proposed during those conversations that there be a grace period, if you will. So if you're really going to build one and you gave all the other requirements, and I will say for the public to understand, it's not the easiest thing to get approved. There, there may be 25 or 30 in the town of Red Hook, because of the board of health requirements for sewage, septic, and other things, it's not, it's not an easy thing to do, to have an engineer, there's, there's, there's a process, it's expensive. And so I think that there was some discussion, but that didn't go anywhere about maybe having a grace period of a few years. So after then, then you could convert it for the other purpose.
Yeah, and just for the folks at home, just to clarify, what we mean by short-term rental is defined under state law, it's less than 30 days. So none of this legislation would preclude anybody from renting out of the place for, for longer period of time. That includes a room within a house, you certainly wouldn't want to have a roommate live with you. The question becomes that short-term nature where you have the anonymity, perhaps, and you have the opportunity, and that's the, the scales that we're weighing here. Can we talk about zoning districts for a minute? So I, I see your list here, so you have RD1, one and a half, TNDR, those are our densest districts, O, I, Office Industrial, understood, that's not a particular use, and Waterfront Conservation, obviously, was a district created to try to prohibit intense development or usage. It's, for the folks at home, the Waterfront Conservation District is within the 1,000 feet of the high watermark of the Hudson River. So I understand those districts. Talk to me, if you would please, about the Hamlet district. And so what's allowed there? That's another district. What do we, what do we have there? According to this...
Well, class, class one is allowed, class two is allowed, class three is allowed in the H and HB only by special permit. So spell that there.
Okay. But help me understand why it is that you, the task force has proposed...
Why would it allow it in the Hamlet district?
Yes, and not in the RD1 and the one and a half, the Hamlet can be, is, is denser, it's more like the TNDR. So help me understand that. I see in class three, class three, by special permit in class three.
Yeah, I guess like I'm kind of confused why class three has a different group than class one. It seems like it would be the same amount of traffic and concern. Yeah, sorry. I don't know what the, the difference between if there is a EU already existing for class It seems like that would be very comparable to renting out one to two bedrooms in a class one. So I don't, I don't understand the difference in the zoning zones that are permitted.
It's delineating, right? Unless that, that maybe it's delineating where it's occurring. It's not happening in your main structure. So that if you were to take a look at hosted and unhosted and enforcement, I mean, how are you going to enforce class one? I guess that's a, that's an issue.
First, you have to have a law of the books to enforce.
Well, of course, I, I understand, but...
Well, how do you, how do you enforce any zoning law?
No, I, I...
It's through the building department or through complaints that people make. Once, once we hook up with the Duchess County and get the Host Compliance, you know, to coordinate who's, who's renting through Airbnb and then APRO or whatever, then we'll be able to maintain a list of who's out operating STRs. To answer your question about why, why we didn't say it was not allowed in the Hamlet district, I, I don't know an answer to that, except the sense that a Hamlet, I mean, we have three Hamlets, Amandale, Barrytown, and Upper Red Hook, and they're unique areas where people live, and maybe we don't see them as a residential one, one and a half acre area. They're smaller lots, they're closer together. But otherwise, I, I mean, we would have to explore that.
Well, they're also not zoned. I mean, a Hamlet district doesn't designate, a house has to be on one acre or one and a half acres or three acres. It's not, it's, it doesn't have the size designation, and there are many homes that are Hamlets that are very tightly together, and then there are others that are, I mean, I think of Barrytown, there are some rather large plots there. You know, there's some homes that are, that are big. So I think it's a little, it's a little harder in a Hamlet because of that.
Well, I have some pretty, there are some that are very, very close, and I know you're concerned about waste water disposal and...
Well, there must be a reason. I mean, I'm sitting here to three, there's got to be a reason. I just don't, because the task force would immediately put an X there for a Hamlet if, if it was a sense that it was the same as a one or one and a half RD. So there must be a reason, and we would have to explore that with the planner and find out what our, go back over our notes and see what our reasoning was.
Okay.
I'll find, I'll find that out for the board.
Yeah, but I do recall on class three, part of the reason it was a special permit, my recollection was, in the various meetings, was that because it is not a part of the primary residence, it's a separate contained residence, that there's opportunities for unhosed things to go on there, and that you don't have the same level of supervision, if you will, I'm not sure if that's the right word, but oversight by the homeowner in those scenarios. My recollection is that there was that issue.
And I think that's, that goes to Jacob's question, which is why the differentiation between class three and class one, because you do need to take a look at additional parking, because they, in many cases, won't be parking at the same structure because they can't get in each other's way.
That's right.
If they need to come and go.
But, but don't forget, Jacob, I mean, you have to sit back and start with a traditional thought. When a person buys a house and lives in the town of Red Hook as a residential home, you know, your home, you raise your children there, you whatever you do. And then if a person wants to build a motel or a hotel, that's what they do, through the business codes and everything, they buy a commercial entity. In between those two, for many years, we had what we call a bed and breakfast, which was hopefully a big house where you could rent out rooms, you were still giving breakfast with you. It was like a family-oriented thing, but a very, an exception to the rule. But now, there's an effort by many people, and they usually have an economic interest. And that effort is to take that residential home and make it into a commercial place. In other words, you sell space by people, come and go, it's under 30 days. So the caution is, wait a second, you know, do you open up your whole residential communities to this commercial aspect? Or do you say, no, you're not allowed to come in under any commercial reasons? And there are people who spoke to us who become widows, or single women with a child, and they have an extra one or two bedrooms, they could actually make some money to help pay their mortgage if they could rent out one or two bedrooms. So, you know, that's a logical response by the community that that should be allowed. So when you look over class one and class two, that, that has to do with the smaller one or two bedrooms. Once you get back up to the bed and breakfast level, now you need a special permit, you're back up to the old bed and breakfast law, where many more eyes are on what you propose so we protect the community, the neighborhood. Class three has to do with an accessory building, where, as we said, that Bill says, you know, people may say, well, I'm going to build an accessory building and make it like a mini motel, you know, that sort of stuff. Take advantage, take advantage, financial advantage. So we, we wanted to limit that a little bit so that you have a class three with certain limitations.
Well, we're, we're discussing potential impacts, so the impact would be on the, on the neighbors and the neighborhood. And so I think that's what we need to take into consideration, not whether or not somebody's beneficial.
Well, the thought of the task force, whenever you, whenever you inject a commercial relationship, it has impacts. You don't know who the people are, you don't know how they're going to behave, you have no control of who they're, I mean, there are definitely impacts. If you have a residential neighborhood, you know, yes, of course, there could be impacts because you have bad neighbors, they don't mow the grass, they leave cars in the yard. But at least there's some effort to, through the zoning law, to control your fellow neighbors.
Yeah, I think that the question I have is more about which districts were chosen than the actual setup, right? Because I think that elsewhere in the law it accounts for having it be, like, because unhosed it is largely, you know, forbidden under this proposal. So it would be hosted, it would be a primary homeowner, the property owner would be the host of the STR. Like, I guess that's a thing that, I think that this accounts for it in different ways, about the commercialization piece of it, right? Where it is meant to be your primary office, it is meant to be something that you're hosting, you have some presence, right? So I guess that's why my question was about why there are other ones that are forbidden where you have, otherwise, I understand that it's like a separate thing, it's not the same building. You still have the presence of the property, you still have the parking that's accounted for, you still have the...
Can you frame your question one more time to me because I don't understand?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm wondering why the forbidden zones, the ones where it's not permitted in class three, are different from the classes in class one?
Well, they're mostly...
No, no, it's allowed in all class threes. The only place, the difference between the EDC proposal and the, and with the task force, in a, in a very basic, EDC says allow...
I'm asking about the three classes, class one and class three.
But EDC would say allow STRs everywhere.
Yeah.
The, the intermunicipal task force is allowing STRs pretty much everywhere except one and one and a half residential district. That's the difference.
I'm asking why three also permitted, the B1, the LI, and then the special permit, which we kind of talked about for the Hamlet. So like, I, I guess I'd be curious why there's the two extra zones.
The B1, the LI, and the TNDR, and why? Well, those are all limited zoning districts as part of the, you know, the Centers and Green Space Plan.
But there's two other ones in the class three, and I'm, I'm curious why there are two other ones where it's not permitted.
You're talking about B1 and...
Yeah, B1 and LI, I think it is. Yeah, and I guess like I don't have the map in front of me, so I don't know where that is, right? So I'm curious why there's a difference.
B1's down here, right? On OX, TND, B1's over B2.
So your question, I, I don't understand your question. Why, why is class three have two more than class one?
It's stricter in terms of which zones it's permitted in, and which is not.
Well, why don't we, why don't we take a look at that, just, just the Hamlet districts, the B1, the LI, and try to understand better why this, why, why there's a distinction in the different classes? Um, why, why, why there's a distinction in the different classes? How about that? Can we leave that for homework for you?
Yeah, I think, I think if the town planner was here, they would have an easy answer for you because I think it has to do with another aspect of the zoning law that talks about the ability to have an existing accessory building in the B one district. It's limited.
Yeah.
So I mean, we have to include that in class three here, but you don't have to include it in class one and two, something like that.
It just doesn't, it seems like if you're already not allowed to have the accessory building in that one, that doesn't, it's, but it's kind of redundant here. You're forbidden, you're not permitting it here and it's already not permitted. It's just kind of like you're doing both and you don't really need to separate it out. And I guess the reason I'm asking is because it seems like class one and class three for, for most purposes, other than where the S T R is taking place, are the same, right? It's one and two bedrooms. It's going to be the same amount of parking.
Except one is your primary residence, the other is an existing accessory building. There's not a difference there?
Well, there is and the different requirements because there's parking or, yeah, business.
You'll find that there are other zoning.
I think this bill just, just nailed the answer. You want to repeat it though.
Okay, so in the B one is a business district and you can't have residential, uh, it's not supposed to be residential properties. It's for business. And so.
You can only have accessories.
So it'd be an apartment above the business or something like that.
Yeah, B one just, you can't have the primary residence. So that makes sense. Can we talk briefly? I know we don't want to go on all night. We've got to talk about other issues. Um, but we give the public a chance to, to get some insight into some of the questions that we're grappling with. Can we talk about unhoseded for a minute? So the proposal is, um, for unhoseded only in the agricultural business district.
And one time exemption.
And a one time exemption.
Exception.
A little exception, yeah. So, yeah, we can, we can tackle that in a few minutes, but so. Our residents have a right, they have a reasonable expectation when they move into a residential district. In fact, it's codified in law to have certain expectations of a residential make. And certainly when you, when you look at the neighborhoods, um, that's a risk. Is the loss of a neighbor. You don't have a neighborhood unless you have a neighbor. So if you're in one of our terrific neighborhoods, College Park, Forest Park, um, and they start becoming unhoseded. Places one affordability is always as an issue for some. If you're entering affordability, it takes some of the stock off of it. If you're trying to hold on to it, however, affordability may be enhanced by renting on the road. So there's two, two arguments to, to be made there. But, but talk to me about why it would be detrimental to allow unhoseded in our more rural parts of town. What's the thinking there? Where we might be able to.
It is allowed in A B D.
In A B D. Well, that's true. In A B D.
So, so the R D five and R D three?
Yeah, and the third, and three acre and five acre. So I just wanted to get some.
It's not allowed. It's not allowed.
It's not allowed on unhoseded. So some thoughts for you?
Well, first, the town board, just to remind everybody, is the one that basically took away the opportunity for bed and breakfast and lodging in the R D three and the R D five. So in, in a way, it would be an about face to a decision that the board made previously to keep those residential. I think there are also, you know, many concerns about unhoseded and things that happen in unhoseded situations. I, I will say, and I think the public should know this, that the task force, and we have somebody in the member here who sat in many of those meetings. We weren't all in agreement on that issue of the R D three and the R D five. Those, those were pretty kind of split decisions among us about whether they should be allowed to be housed or unhoused. Because many of those properties are very large, they're very far from anybody else. Um, and the likelihood that even if somebody was having a loud party, that it would be disruptive is, is mitigated somewhat, at least in some of the larger parcels. So, you know, I think at the end of the day, the vote came out on the board, on the task force to not allow it. But it's, it isn't, uh, I think that's an issue that is open for discussion.
In your mind?
In my mind, yeah. And many other people's.
Okay. All right. So maybe we want to work the, the song on. Christine Kane is not with us tonight. She's not feeling well, so we definitely want to get her input on that. Um, one of the things that I wanted to mention to you, and this harkens back to the, the days when I chaired the Agriculture and Open Space Committee and we developed the agricultural business district. We actually proposed to the then board, um, if, if you recall, that the business district be the area, not just the parcels of a certain size. And, and I think perhaps for political reasons, um, the board at the time decided that they wanted to limit it only to parcels that were ten acres and above. And so what ended up happening in the process is we had these small parcels integrated within the agricultural business district. Something that any smart growth planner would tell you is not the best way to proceed because you end up leaving the potential for a significant land use conflicts between the residential and the agricultural. And I think I may have mentioned to you, I said in, uh, maybe one or two meetings or, or mentioned to you, Bill, that it was a particular parcel in town that I think really sort of, you know, visually you could see it immediately and know that it was one of those situations where it's a three acre parcel or a three acre zone and it borders a farm and it's right there on the picture line. And there had been issues, land use conflicts between the previous farmer or the farmer who was working the land at that time and the owner of that property. Well, lo and behold, what happens just within the last year is that, you know, there's, there's now another land use conflict between, um, you know, two entities there. And I think even our CEO has issued an order to remedy what, what he considers to be a spike fence put around that residential house. And so these are the types of situations that we try to, try to prevent. And I guess what I would say, it would suggest to you, and I suggested to, to the task force a couple of years ago, is that you consider you're allowing lodging to be built on a farm. But if a farmer were to go out or a landlord were to go out and owns a farm and acquire one of those adjoining smaller parcels with a residential in it, it might actually be smart land use policy to allow that existing structure instead of ruining prime soils or soils that statewide to, to, to rent it out where they can control the activity going in that house and they can because they own it and control it. So I would, I would ask you to maybe take a look at the A B D and, you know, expand it, you know, perhaps a little bit to include what was originally the proposal to the town board at the time and see if maybe some of those three and five acres, if there's a room for flexibility there, um, in unhoseded because it would accomplish many things at the same time, including discouraging farmers from building right on, on the, uh, the farm themselves. So I just put that out there for you to consider on the, on the posted. And then, yeah, for me, three and five acre, um, uh, you know, I'd like to hear from, from the folks, uh, out there, what, what their thoughts are on that. Other, other topics and questions that are, sure, please, Bill?
And one quick thing about the three and the five.
Sure.
There was some discussion at a number of the meetings also in relation to that about actual distance between property, you know, uh, you know, you, you could be in a five acre zoning district and have your house basically be a hundred feet from another house. And then you could end up with a situation where somebody's having a loud party and you're sort of back where you started. So, um, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, having a more granular and refined way of, of doing that. But it's, it is more complicated and it raises a lot of issues about how do you measure the distance? What is the appropriate distance? I mean, there are a lot of, there are a lot of.
What would the requirements need to be in order for you to think that that was acceptable? And, and again, you know, all this with the backdrop of this, this is obviously a popular trend. There's, there's arguments that it's good for the economy, certainly good for certain types of businesses. I, I, I thought the E D C survey was instructive. I mean, it sort of tells you at least what the business owner feels about who their customers are, their sense of their customers and their clear winners. You know, if you're up here for a short term rental, you're going to probably go to a restaurant or get something, uh, of an artistic or cultural nature. You know, but if you are the framing company, for example, over at the chocolate factory, nobody's coming up here for the weekend to get something framed.
Maybe they're even a Hanaford.
Right, or, or, or not even that, to Hanaford, yeah, for, for a good example. So there are always, with these decisions, always those that benefit, um, business wise and those that, that may not benefit as much. Although I think the argument is that some people get introduced to rentable, I guess why? Um, because, you know, the reality is we don't have, we don't have a lot of lodging. You look to our, our sister township down south and the hundreds of homes that they have. I'm not suggesting we want that, by the way. I'm just saying that, that there's a distinction between, um, you know, our ability to accommodate. You folks are, are constituents, you know, and there's a graduation, there's a death, there's a, a wedding, there's whatever the situation is. So, um, it's a, it's a tough balance. We haven't been successful in trying to increase the lodging, but we've tried in the places that we've targeted. So, um, all, all good thoughts. So I would suggest maybe at our September fourteenth meeting, um, we continue this discussion. And again, for the folks at home, we'd really like to get as much input as possible on this topic. And get your thoughts and, you know, please understand that you may be a proponent or opponent of short term rentals. That we know that we have, uh, folks on both ends of the spectrum in our community. That's what makes it wonderfully interesting and diverse. So with that said, sometimes questions come before you in local government that you don't necessarily relate. And the decisions get put upon you, we talk about all the time that we want home rule in our community. And then once in a blue moon, something comes along and, and it makes us think, well, why did they give us this decision making? Because it's kind of a no win situation. And one of those is the legalization of marijuana. And I know that this is a topic, uh, once again, that folks in our community have, um, a wide range of opinions about. And so we just want to say that, uh, we acknowledge that. Um, we've been charged by the state to make some decisions about a couple of issues now that marijuana hasn't been legalized. And essentially there's an opt out decision that we need to make as a municipality by the end of this year. It's whether or not, um, in exchange for tax revenue, um, we want to have dispensaries, um, stores, uh, essentially. And whether or not we want to have what is referred to as lounges, as a way, uh, would be the alcohol equivalent, equivalent of a bar in our community. And we have until December thirty first to make that decision. We want to get your input on those questions as well. And so what I'd like to do is maybe get up to that page. I know Jacob is going to tell me exactly what page it is.
I actually don't, I'm, I'm doing the paper copy right now.
Jacob. So. Something like that. Okay, let's get there. And I saw a nice little cheat sheet, um, from one of our fellow municipalities. And so I'm going to put it up here for the folks at home. Can you see that? Okay. All right. So first to know that we have a decision to make by the end of this year, but it is not expected that the sale of adult used cannabis will occur until late twenty twenty two or early twenty twenty three. At the earliest, they've got some work to do. That would be alcohol beverage control and the liquor authority. Retail stores, I gave you the comparison. The state knows that they are going to prohibit the location of these dispensary or retail stores within five hundred feet of a school and two hundred feet of a house of worship. So that takes out quite a bit of the village. All sales will be subject to a four percent local sales tax, which will be distributed to the county where sales takes place. Counties are entitled to retain twenty five percent and distribute the remaining seventy five percent. Or said much more efficiently, we will get three percent of the local sales tax associated, uh, with this activity if we decide, um, that that is in, uh, the best interest of the town. If the town, uh, does not opt out and the dispensary is located within the village, then there's a, a tax sharing arrangements that's created between the village and the town. And if that's not agreed upon, then it gets split fifty fifty. The monies will be distributed on a quarterly basis.
And to be one in Tibbly and one in Village of Red Oak?
Could be. It all depends on the decisions that those municipalities make. Under the state law, cannabis smoking and vaping is treated the same as regular smoking. So as you know, there is no smoking permitted on any of our municipal grounds and our parks. So you would not be, uh, subject to exposure, uh, provided we, we can enforce that on those properties. We, of course, can pass local laws to put additional regulations governing the time, the place and the manner of the operation of those dispensaries. So think about if you are inclined to allow them in the community, where you would quote unquote want them. And, and know that we wouldn't want to necessarily stay in without quickly developing some regulation on where they would be located, the hours and so on and so forth. And to that end, there is an option of us opting out and then coming back in later on once we feel we have a handle on what we may, uh, want to do in terms of allowing it. And if we've got some tight regulations on it. But know that you can't have regulations that would completely, and the legislation speaks to this. You cannot preclude it, make it so impossible that in, in theory it couldn't be located anywhere in town, but you're doing it just to get some money. Okay. All right, let's see. Retail and/or premises sales cannot be prohibited if we opt in, but can be subject to the local zoning. We've got that. You can opt in later. And, you know, again, we can opt out of one or two or both of those options, which is the lounge or the dispensary. Okay. And then how does it dovetail into our zoning code? Is it retail? And if we are going to allow lounges, how would they be regulated? So those are, and then, you know, I included such many presentations on the topic. It's what all municipalities are grappling with. I think this is one from the associates of the towns. It's rather like they apologize, uh, it's sideways on the screen there, but it is available. It's sideways on the screen there, but it is available. We'll make sure it's available on the town website. So I wasn't going to press you for, for your thoughts, if you have any terrific, but I thought maybe we might think about scheduling an info session to try and get some public input, or at the very least solicit from the public some input on this topic. Because we know that we will get some opinions on it. It's something that I think people have strong feelings about.
I think it would be helpful if we could have a conversation with the other municipalities in our town. Talk to both villages to see what their thoughts are. And maybe it might make sense to kind of collaborate on those sessions to get, you know.
To do a joint, a joint?
Yeah.
That was a bad use of word, wasn't it? A joint, I thought.
Maybe that's how the advertisement.
Yep, thank you. You're going into marketing now? There we go. Very good. All right, so let's do that.
I just want clarification on one thing.
Sure, please clarify.
You can always, if you opt-out, you can always opt-in later, correct?
Yes, you can.
But if you opt-in, can you change your mind later if you think it's not?
You cannot.
Yeah, and I think it's important for the public to, that's what's my understanding, is that once you're in, you're in and you can't get out. So it's an important decision to make and it has consequences.
Yeah.
We would be able to adjust our zoning, though, post-opt-in.
Yes.
Except you can't make your zoning.
We still restrict the.
That's eventually, basically, no.
Yeah.
It, it makes you wonder how many applications from folks who want to have a dispensary or whatever are going to come flooding in in January in the various municipalities, right? So, you know, there's a time, time's a march and it's August, September, get some input. Reach out to our villages, October.
Is there any way we can get more information from the state about their, what they're doing for their regulations?
There isn't any. I'm sorry, there, there isn't any. They haven't even put the competencies together to.
So they're essentially asking municipalities to draw a blank?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I personally, that's sort of a unreasonable thing to do.
I agree, but there are no laws yet.
Because we're basically, you're asking someone to make a decision without having the information.
Well, there's a, well, there's a couple, a couple of things to, you know, there, there is, I, I don't think it's fair to say that there's, there's no input from the state, although obviously we are tied along on. But when an application comes in, it's like the state liquor authority. So somebody comes and wants to establish a bar and ask for a license. You, as the municipality, get to weigh in and say, hey, this is not an appropriate location for a liquor license. It's right next door to a daycare. This is not where we even want to have it. Or this is an operator that we don't feel would, you know, be responsible, whoever's, whatever. So you do get to weigh in on applications and the state needs to approve, you know, approve any application that comes in front of them, so. But yes, more regulations coming, more guidance coming, must be, must be. Which is why the state is saying, interestingly enough, that you're looking at late twenty-two or early twenty-three. And I'm not a betting man, but something tells me we might need a little more time to December thirty-first of this year. But we'll see. Here comes, here comes Belloni, oh, go ahead.
I, I don't agree to this extent. I think what they're saying is that they want the municipalities to answer two questions. Are you going to allow a dispensary?
Yeah.
Are you going to allow a lounge?
Yeah.
If you do, say so by the thirty-first. It's not a big, you know, I mean, check with your people, have these meetings and see what, what the sense of the community is. But it's a simple question. But if you say, we're going to allow a dispensary, then you would broadcast some zoning saying dispensaries are allowed in such, such districts. So there, you limit and control where they can put them. But once somebody says, I want to go to Red Hook and open a dispensary, the state checks to see, yes, you're allowed to have a dispensary in that town according to their rule. But then everything else is going to have to be according to the state law. They're, they're going to license you, they're going to require it. This, this, if it takes them two or three years to come up with that, so what? But our only, our only focus is, is either yes or no, a dispensary or lounge. But I guess the question is, to get to the yes or no answer, without them having made up their mind, other than things that were statutorily done, like the two hundred feet from the House of Worship. If they haven't figured out what their own regulations are, how do we know that when they do come up with a, say we say yes, and they come up with their regulations and we just, we see them and we say, well, this may not be good for Red Hook, then you're kind of stuck. What do you mean? You mean like Red Hook says, dispensaries will be allowed in ABD, in RT five or three or something, or B one, or something like that? And then the state comes down and says, this guy wants to open up a dispensary in another zoning, he can't do it because that's the home rule. We say, this is where you can have it. So I, I don't think that's going to be an issue, is it? No, I mean, the state can't tell us where, all they can say is that are they allowed or they're not allowed? And then the state will tell that applicant for the license, this is where they're allowed. If you want one, you got to go down there and get your. And if you don't answer the question by December thirty-first, is it, is it sort of like some of our other rules that it automatically defaults to yes?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean.
Well, that's not typically how zoning works in town. So that's what's unusual about this, is that actually, in our township, if it's not mentioned, it's not allowed, so. Sorry.
Well, I don't know, but the state is saying it's going to be allowed. The only thing you can do is opt-out.
The, the state's going to override.
Yeah.
And, and folks should know, if you're trying to understand what, what the benefit is, so we get sales tax revenue also, the state is going to develop some revenue. And they're going to use, they're going to have a cannabis program. They're going to use some of those monies towards drug treatment and public education fund. They're going to use the, some of the money towards the state lottery program for grants for school districts, forty percent to community grants reinvestment fund. And so there's the, the carrot to go along with it. And you should know that we, we will not be in a position to determine, as, as we can't now, what somebody grows. New York State is in charge of all that ag and markets, we'll oversee. So we won't be able to say to, you know, one of our favorite farmers, sorry, you can't grow any more in our community. And as you know, we've already had a farmer to grow hemp, which sometimes smells like fungus, or so they tell me. There's also, under this law, a personal cultivation, so individuals can grow a minimal amount. If you're twenty-one and older, you can have three ounces of cannabis or up to twenty-four grams of concentrated cannabis.
But that's state law, that's not just a local.
That's state law, no, I'm just, I'm letting folks know what, what else is included in this legislation. Individuals can grow three mature plants and three immature plants. You cannot have more than twelve plants per property. You have to take reasonable steps to ensure other twenty-one does not have accidents. Okay, so.
We ready to vote?
No, I, I think we need to get, we absolutely want to get some public input on that topic. Thank you.
So Robert, realistically, we should have a plan in place just to know whichever way we're going to go, because it's just unlimited.
Yeah.
Like whichever process, like if we have to enact a little along, we should know the drop dead time before we get to the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll work backwards from December thirty-first. And if we don't find that we are any interested in, in having one or both of these options, that we would want to opt-out, then you have to pass a local law in order to do that. So we could put our attorney to the town on notice to maybe help us work backwards on, on dates.
It's on whether or not you want to take the position that you want the permissive referendum, if it were petitioned to be done by the end of the year as well.
Right. Right, well, that's the other feature. Thank you for mentioning this. We could go to all this trouble of making some decisions and it's subject to permissive referendum. And so if, if enough voters collect signatures, it could go to, to a, a public vote on that.
And does that impact whether, like, the lawmaking process? Like, would that affect the December thirty-first date?
Well, you know, in theory, yes, it impacts. Because you would want to have here, and I think this is what Chris was implying, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. You'd want to have that thirty-day period. Well, frankly, you'd want to have not only the thirty-day, but the time, you know, you need to schedule that, that, a vote. Is it the usual forty-five to sixty-two, do you recall?
I mean, it's not clear that the vote would have to be taken before December thirty-first. That's something that people are discussing, but I won't call it your attention because if I were you, I would be trying to make a decision sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
It's only if you opt-out, then it gives rise to the referendum, right?
Because we'd basically be out of time. We'd wait sixty days for a public vote. Because the lawmaking process plus that. Because we're not going to have this on the agenda for anything before October, realistically, late September.
I'm ready to vote in September.
So there's something we should.
But which way, though?
Whatever we want to do.
But which way?
Well, can we?
Comp, compromise.
Can we, can, can we potentially at least explore a couple of things that Jacob mentioned? Can we get an update? I know I have spoken to one of our mayors about this topic. I don't know where their board is. But maybe try to get some input from them and get our public input and see maybe whether or not we, we could pull off an info session in time. Maybe you and I could work on, on how we might accomplish that. No guarantee, but we, we definitely want to hear from the public on this topic. And, and all topics, but especially this, because we know that people have passionate, passionate views on, on, on this.
If you decide that you want to pursue, I mean, you can have an info session, certainly, for sure. But then if you decide that you want to consider it, you're going to have to have a public hearing, a formal public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah. Sure. Well, I'm going to let somebody else lead that discussion, because I don't even drink. Very good. What, what else do we have tonight? Correspondence, it was just those letters from individuals in support or.
Not in moratorium.
Against, oh, and then we have the, that's exactly, thank you, I called it. We realize we also are just about up to date, up to the date where our six-month moratorium on road opening permits, thank you, expires. And so our engineers are hard at work. They've gotten the input of board members. They've done their review. Our county to the town had a couple of suggestions as well, our suggestions were. And so they believe that they could finalize in the next couple of months a draft of new road specifications. And then obviously, our highway student tenant wants to move through them and add input and go back and forth. So their recommendation is to extend the moratorium for six months. That would put us, though they do recognize they could consider we had done, depending on, you know, how many different iterations they have to do a little earlier than that, but they really think six months, three months is not sufficient. So that's what this resolution is, to set a public hearing. That would have to be on the twenty-fifth. I know we said we were hoping not to have a meeting, but if we could just have this one public hearing at night, we could make it shorter, sweet.
Robert, do we know whether there have been applications that have come in for permits in the six-month moratorium period?
I'm telling you, I'm telling you. I haven't heard anything from the other district. So this is, we have forty-eight, Deanna.
No, but the leading agency resolution was forty-seven. There wasn't the established date for the public hearing, forty-eight?
Oh, yes, yes.
Forty?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine?
Forty-nine.
Okay. Dated August tenth, twenty-twenty-one. Proposed form of local law C, proposed of twenty-twenty-one, extending a moratorium ending February twenty-eighth, twenty-two on the issuance of permits for work within the right-of-way in a town. Highway in the town of Red Hook. And I assume, is there a second?
Second.
Any dispersion? If not, follow in favor. Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, of the, the time of the public hearing?
No, seven-thirty-five and eight-twenty-five.
And what? Upon eight-twenty-five?
On eight-twenty-five. And I believe that completes the items on the agenda. As I quickly referenced, we had four pieces of correspondence. I just want to acknowledge them. Laura Kate and Andrew Abruzzo wrote to us about their concerns about STRs. We had letters in support of short-term rentals by, et cetera, from Pure, Alyssa and Bill Murn, and Deanna George. Sarah Clarkson, yes, Sarah. You have not been to Sarah's new store in the village that grows nests. It's wonderful. It's a wonderful addition to our community. And Sarah's been here for quite some time. We wish her well, and my daughter has her own time. Okay, that said, that completes all of our business for tonight. Is there any other public comment? Linda, can you?
I just wanted to comment on the Winnicke Trail project and ask what the width of the trail is and the surface, and if the benches will be employed for people who can't walk long distances but need to rest in between? And if the disabled will be able to use their motor scooters on that surface? And how electric bikes and skateboards will be handled?
Yeah, that's a good question. We'll have to deal with the electric bikes. I think we have, you know, set a non-motorized trail. And I think that is generally referred to typically like quads and, and cars and vehicles. Obviously, we made sure it's going to be an ADA accessible trail.
Not the whole trail necessarily, but portions, right?
Portions of the trail.
And the, the language in the easement document does recognize that motorized vehicles for disabled individuals are not considered to be motorized vehicles that are prohibited.
Right.
And in answer to your question about the width of the trail, I think we're going to have to get back to you because I, I don't want to give you the wrong number. It's, I think it's probably eight?
I think we settled on eight.
But.
We're hoping for more, but we settled on a minimum of eight.
I think ten is.
The material's like non-page.
Ten is, ten is ideal. I think we were concerned that we might not be able to achieve ten in all places, so we spoke to a minimum of eight.
Because, because this is within an area that has a DEC covenant, Winnicke is very limited in some of the things that they can do with the trail. So the primary purpose for their acquisition was watershed protection. So they have to be constrained by some of the things that DEC required for that purpose. So. But that's a good question, some of these are good questions, and I think.
DEC is getting better in addressing the NDA considerations.
Yeah.
Only because people have pressed about it. One person.
Okay. Any other public comments? All right, if not, I want to thank you for joining us tonight. Please take care. We wish you good health. And we'll see you again April twenty-fifth for the public hearing, or more likely, September tenth. or, or more likely, uh, September tenth for our next town vote.
And kill the mass.
August twenty.
August.
A second.
All right.
All in favor?
All right.